Good evening. I'd like to call this voting agenda meeting to order. Please rise from the moment of silence. For the victims of families of the 9/11 attack, please keep them in your thoughts on a daily basis. Please remember the armed forces that continue to keep up the fight on a day-to-day basis. Thank you. Now, the President believes this is to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, veritable, and just for all.
Chief, roll call vote, please.
Councilperson Kobe?
Present.
Councilperson Veris?
Here.
Councilperson Deppco?
Here.
Councilperson Vlos?
Here.
Councilperson Sarsfield?
I'm here.
President de Catan?
Here.
Mayor Kabista?
Here.
All presidents, okay.
Thank you. We'll begin with any public comment on any of the listed motions this evening. If you do have public comment, please step forward and state your name. Yes, Leo?
I would think it would be an idea that last week in the tax-raking period, have someone there in the morning, in the afternoon, be the people's work, you know, and, like, just the last week, you know. And another thing, how many trains walking down here today? You have no idea?
I haven't seen a train in over a year.
Now, the reason I say this, why couldn't they walk the main street, cut a road across the tracks, put a sign there, "Stop Broken Listen"? And then some people say that meanwhile, they have the full license, if there isn't a stop sign there that says "Stop Broken Listen," you don't stop Broken Listen. God help you. It's just like going through a red light. Am I right? And that's what I have to say. I think that would solve the problem much easier than any other way. It could be straight up and easy for the people up here at the industrial park, all that, as they did before, but all these brilliant engineers, oh no, they cut it off. See? And that's what I have to say. And I thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Leo. Is there any other public comment on the listed motions? Seeing that there's no other public comment on the listed motions, we'll begin with administration and finance, Councilman Veris.
First motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of August 8th, 2011, and August 16th, 2011.
Motion has been made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Motion to approve the September bill list and addendum, including the invoice from GTN law. This motion is subject to review.
Second. Motion has been made in second. Would you clarify, Councilman Veris, to why it's being subject to review?
There had been a calculation of the hours versus the hourly rate, which came out different, so we're going to revisit that in the next couple of days.
Thank you. Motion has been made in second. Chief, would you call a roll call vote, please?
Councilperson Sarsfield?
Yes.
Councilperson Vlos?
Yes.
Councilperson Deppco?
Yes.
Councilperson Veris?
Yes.
Councilperson Kobe?
Yes.
President de Catan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to accept the 2012 minimum municipal obligation report for the Borough of Carnegie Police Pension Fund and Borough of Carnegie Non-Uniform Pension Plan as submitted by the Borough Manager.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Motion to ratify the labor agreement between the Borough of Carnegie and the Carnegie Public Works Department.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion on this item?
No, I just would like to comment that I think that Councilman Vlos and Councilman Deppco really did a great job on this. You know, I want to commend them and also the side of Public Works that they were able to come to this street and I think it's something that our residents can look at and I think it's very fair agreement.
Thank you. The motion has been made in second. Roll call vote, please, Chief.
Councilperson Veris?
Yes.
Councilperson Deppco?
Yes.
Councilperson Vlos?
Yes.
Councilperson Sarsfield?
Yes.
Councilperson Kobe?
Yes.
President de Catan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Code Enforcement, Councilwoman Kobe?
Thank you. Motion to adopt ordinance number 2360 in ordinance of the Borough of Carnegie, providing for the regulations and restrictions on open fires and open burning.
Second. Motion has been made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Motion to approve a curb cut at 979 Forsyth Road.
Second.
Can I make a comment, Mr. President?
Yes, motion has been made in second. Comment?
I think we're still waiting for some engineering response on this matter as to whether that is a safe curb cut and its location, and I would recommend, I would move to table.
Second.
Motion has been made in second to table this motion. Roll call vote, please, Chief.
Councilperson Kobe?
Yes.
Councilperson Veris?
Yes.
Councilperson Deppco?
Yes.
Councilperson Vlos?
Yes.
Councilperson Sarsfield?
Yes.
President de Catan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Move to table.
Well, the motion will hang out until they ask.
Motion to certify the Borough zoning map that reflects changes made pursuant to the adoption of Borough Ordinance number 2357, changing the zoning in the Library Hill area from R2 to R1.
Second. Motion has been made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Public Works, Councilwoman Deppco?
Motion to approve pay application request number three from independent contracting in the amount of $86,392.66 for repair work completed between July 1st, 2011 through July 31st, 2011. For the 2011 sanitary sewer point project as required by the consent order.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Chief, roll call vote, please.
Councilperson Sarsfield?
Yes.
Councilperson Vlos?
Yes.
Councilperson Deppco?
Yes.
Councilperson Veris?
Yes.
Councilperson Kobe?
Yes.
President de Catan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve pay application request number four from Robinson Pipe Cleaning in the amount of $5,151.89 for work completed between July 28th, 2011 through July 29th, 2011. For the 2010 sanitary sewer mining project as required by the consent order.
Second. Motion has been made in second. Roll call vote, please, Chief.
Councilperson Kobe?
Yes.
Councilperson Veris?
Yes.
Councilperson Deppco?
Yes.
Councilperson Vlos?
Yes.
Councilperson Sarsfield?
Yes.
President de Catan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Public Safety, Councilman Sarsfield?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one motion this evening. It's a motion to, it's a motion to advertise ordinance 2361, an ordinance of the Borough of Carnegie, amending ordinance number 1060, Chapter 15, Section 206 of the Borough Code of Ordinance, relating to parking of commercial vehicles in the borough.
Second. Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion on this?
Yes, Mr. President. I believe that we are still looking at this. This is what our communities are doing and what will accommodate our borough and our residents best, so I would suggest that we continue to research this and then come back next month with more information. So if I could have a motion to table that.
So you're making a motion to table? Okay.
Second. Yeah, I'm making the motion.
Okay.
I need somebody to make the motion to table.
I'll move. Motion has been made in second. All those in favor of tabling the motion?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Motion to table carries. Community Development, Councilman Vlos?
Motion to reappoint Ted Hagan and Gary Marches to the zoning hearing board with terms expiring on December 31st, 2015.
Second. Motion has been made in second. Roll call vote, please, Chief.
Councilperson Sarsfield?
Yes.
Councilperson Vlos?
Yes.
Councilperson Deppco?
Yes.
Councilperson Veris?
Yes.
Councilperson Kobe?
Yes.
President de Catan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. President, there are two additional motions that are not on the agenda related to the Presley Heights development that we just received before the meeting today.
Would you please read those motions?
This would be five B on our list of agenda items. Motion to approve Presley Heights Phase Two Bond Reduction Request Number One in the amount of $63,604.49, as reviewed and recommended for approval by the Gateway Engineers in their letter dated September 12th, 2011.
Second. Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion on this item?
Mr. President, I think we should, if someone could provide a full explanation of that since it wasn't on the, it's nothing major, but something, we need an explanation on that since it wasn't on our.
Yeah, I can, I'll take that. Thank you, Mayor.
What happened here is if there was a letter of credit that's put in by Presley Heights for the purpose of building the development, it's basically to provide the borough a means of, should Presley Heights not finish the development, to go and take the money and do it ourselves for the price of cost, they would have to do that, or if they don't do it properly. This is the second and third reduction request. It's either developers' agreement that as they complete certain things, certain checkpoints along the way, they can break that reduction in the bond for the letter of credit. They had the option, in this case, they chose the letter of credit. As they complete certain things and the cost of finishing the development is less, they can ask for us to reduce the letter of credits to whatever the main cost is. They submitted two letter of credits, reduction requests. It has to be done in regular, this is where they submit it into Joe Seitz. Mr. Seitz reviewed it. He agrees that that has been completed and the borough is adequately protected by a lot of these precautions to the letter of credit.
Thank you.
I think this so everyone knows, Joe Seitz is our engineer, he's our engineer of Gateway. If anyone didn't know who that was.
I'm sorry. That's all right. Motion has been made in second. Roll call vote, please, Chief.
Councilperson Kobe?
Yes.
Councilperson Veris?
Yes.
Councilperson Deppco?
Yes.
Councilperson Vlos?
Yes.
Councilperson Sarsfield?
Yes.
President de Catan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion 5C, similar to 5B, motion to approve Presley Heights Phase One Bond Reduction Request Number Two in the amount of $94,234.43, as reviewed and recommended for approval by Gateway Engineers in their letter dated September 12th, 2011.
Second. Motion has been made in second. Roll call vote, please, Chief.
Councilperson Sarsfield?
Yes.
Councilperson Vlos?
Yes.
Councilperson Deppco?
Yes.
Councilperson Veris?
Yes.
Councilperson Kobe?
Yes.
President de Catan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We'll have committee reports, administration and finance, Councilman Veris?
I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. Code Enforcement, Choral Events, Councilwoman Kobe?
I have nothing for Code Enforcement, Choral Events. I just want to say quickly, thank you for everyone that stopped at the Carnegie Choral Events Committee booth during the festival. And as an update, we are working on Halloween will be here soon and shortly thereafter if Santa comes to town and light the night. So, thank you, President de Catan.
Thank you. Public Works, Councilwoman Deppco?
Public Works.
Thank you. Public Safety, Councilman Sarsfield?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things. I want to once again commend our police department for the fantastic job that they do for us during the festival. I had so many people approach me and just let us know how friendly our officers, how helpful they are. They just appreciate the whole atmosphere and they do a great job. And I'd be remiss to not mention the job that our Public Works do for us during those days. It's a long three days for the entire borough, our chief, the major multitasker that he is, just the whole bar, did a fantastic job. A little bit of rain here and there delayed things, but I just wanted to commend our staff for the job they did. Also, I want everybody, each and every day, you know, yesterday being September 11th, we certainly remember the attacks 10 years later, but each and every day, I think we need to be thankful to our police, to our firefighters, to our medics. And I think sometimes we need so much taken for granted, but I never do. Anytime I see one of our officers, I'm always thankful for the job that they do for us. You know, they run into dangers, we run away from it, and I just think that it's fantastic. The mayor had a nice ceremony early in the morning, which I attended, and then I went on to the ceremonies off of Bridgeville, which, you know, 90% of the communities that were invited were here, and it was a very nice ceremony also. And last but not least, Public Safety Day, it looks like October 15th, from noon to 3:00. I will be working with Sergeant Kennedy and the rest of Public Safety to plan the dates of events and move forward on that. That's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Vlos, Community Development?
Just one item, but it is a big one. Most everybody knows that Maggie Forbes has resigned her position as Executive Director of the library. That's a huge impact, I think, for the borough. The Library Music Hall is a special facility that we have, and Maggie has been in charge of the fundraising and development of that for the past eight years. And I think it's going to be very difficult to just find a simple replacement to do everything that she has done. There's not too many people that could go up to Senator Fontaine and ask for half a million dollars, but Maggie was one of those persons that could do that and pull it off. And you don't just go and find somebody to replace somebody like Maggie. So she has raised over $7 million on a project, which most people thought was impossible. And I think most of us were around here when they started that and said that they were going to raise millions of dollars to renovate the Library Music Hall, and everybody laughed at them. But they're getting closer to completion every day, and it's really, truly a miracle for our town. It's attracted national attention. People visit from all over the country, and Maggie deserves a lot of credit for that. So we're going to miss her. She says she will stay engaged in what's going on in the borough, and we hope that she will do that. A lot of friends that she's made here today over the past eight years. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. State Chief Caddox is here tonight to skip the volunteers' report. Junior council is here tonight to skip that report. Mayor's report, please?
I'm here tonight, Mr. President. Give the mayor's report right now. We have criminal arrests and citations for last month of 39, traffic citations equal 44, parking tickets 140, complaints and self-initiated activities by your department 841. Just a little word of warning, that we are going to be cracking down on individuals who leave their vehicles parked on West Main Street in our business district there. We've had a lot of complaints for, by businesses, that individuals parked their, actually residents live there, that live there and parked their car and leaving there all day. So that will be, we will be cracking down on that. Once again, as Councilman Sarsfield said, appreciate the work our officers did on the, for the festival. I think the most important, the festival is a very difficult thing to run, and everyone involved in that, all the volunteers did a fantastic job. But you don't have a festival unless it's a safe event and there is alcohol in that event. Keeping it safe is very important. So in our offices, it's an all-hands-on-deck event for them. It's 24, we do a 24/7 operation, but that means every officer has to be working whether they're on their shift or whether they're at the festival. So thank you very much. I appreciate the chief and his efforts in the scheduling for that week. And so, you know, the chief is right there. When we do the all-hands-on-deck, he works the festival for the whole time. So thank you, chief. We have, we did have a 9/11 ceremony the other, yesterday, and I really, really want to thank the Carnegie Fire Department, the American Legion Post 82 for their help in organizing the event. We had representatives from the Carnegie Fire Department, the Ingram Fire Department, the Crafton Fire Department, the Carnegie Police Department, Carnegie EMTs, the Boy Scouts, and even the, and even our Armed Forces. And it was a short event, but it was, I was very proud of the respect that was shown that day and as all of us up here feel, and it is very important to show that respect on a continuous basis. Thank you. Also, I want to have thank yous for the Irish Town Cleanup. We had 45 individuals participate in the Irish Town Cleanup. And a special thank you to all Saint Elizabeth's National Catholic Church, they were gracious hosts, they provided breakfast. Thank you to Saint Elizabeth's Dan Seton and their Knights of Columbus, who provided people to participate. And I also want to thank Councilman Sarsfield, Chief Harmon, and our Public Works workers, Keith Thatcher and Pete.
Oh, right.
Because they donated their time that day too, so it's, one thing I appreciate is people that actually work for the borough and labor, once and for all donate their time. It's very nice, so thank you very much. Little alert right now, Pennsylvania American Water will be flushing our water lines in this area until the end of September. So, you know, as a resident, you may experience a slow, you know, some slow pressure or some rust-colored water for a brief time. Let the water run and it should be fine after that. I have one event that I want to make known here, is the Food Bank fundraiser. And this is a very important fundraiser for both the, well, especially for the Saint Elizabeth's Dan Seton Food Bank, but it also benefits the Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank. This will be held at Peter's Place, and that's in Colliers, and it'll be held on September 22nd from 6 to 9. The cost is $25 a person, and you can call the Saint Elizabeth's Dan Seton Food Pantry at 412-722-0604 for more information. And I'll send out a reminder of that on my email list, too. And lastly, I wanted to present something to council tonight, and this is, on Tuesday, we approved securing a million dollars for, to borrow for capital projects, and that million dollars will be coming via a bond and refinancing savings. We had a number of residents speak at the meeting regarding this issue. The majority of the residents spoke, in my opinion, not only in my opinion, the majority of the residents spoke against this and or expressed serious concerns about the plan to spend this money. Some of the concerns we heard that evening revolved around the lack of a comprehensive plan for the money, no timeline and accountability. There were also some ideas on how to effectively utilize this money. I have received many contacts via email, phone, and person-to-person with individuals who are very concerned about this measure. With that being said, we all know that this money is public money, and I know everyone up here knows that. So we owe it to the public to address their issues and work together with, to solve these concerns. At this time, I'd like to start the dialogue, and hopefully we can have a meeting about this sometime in the near future, about making some recommendations on how the best way to handle this money to make it the most effective. We did have one plan presented, but that was a plan that was presented after, which was kind of a quick plan, and we did not approve that, so they're still subject to some leeway. These are the things that I'd like to see done. One, I'd like to see the money kept in a separate account so we could better keep track of the money. Two, I'd like us to address the concerns of the public and invite additional participation from them within the next month or so. And three, would like to take Monday's suggestions and use them as a starting point for our plan and timelines for utilizing this money. Now, this is a suggestion I have to council, and I would, you know, I'd be honored if you'd take this seriously. The Business District Renaissance II is what we can call this, and what we can do is we can concentrate on our business district, leverage some outside money, and try, and this is just a starting point, but I'd like to present this, and I, and try to create something that we can, that will draw businesses into this community. So as part of the plan was, council wanted to pave some important roads, and we talked about paving them in the business district. I would love to see that continue. I would also like to see a plan to leverage some additional funds. If we, we have residents here, including Mr. Brown, who said he thought LED lighting was a good idea. I think we should put some money towards LED lighting and try to leverage the rest through grant opportunities. I've done a little bit of work on this right now, but not much, but I think that would be a great idea because in the long run, that would provide a lot of cost savings to the borough. $165,000 a year goes towards electricity for the streetlights. So if we can cut that out, if we can cut that down even 20, 30, or 40%, that's a big savings. I would also like to leverage new money by creating new wealth, new community welcoming signs. With, and what we could do is we can get the long-term community nonprofits to sponsor these signs. We could foot out the bill at the beginning, and it could say, "Welcome to Carnegie," and on the sign it could say, "Home of the Andrew Carnegie Free Library and Music Hall." Now, we had talked about this before, the beautification plan, and then what we, we would charge them a yearly fee, maybe $200 a year until the sign is paid off, and then we'd have beautiful new signs at our entrances and exits, exits all through the community. And we also need a new beautiful sign in the middle of our community. Also, we'd like to see leveraging some money with a maybe a memorial bench program. I think if we concentrate on the business district, we can leverage public work skills, and maybe, now that they have a bucket truck, we'll see what they can do, and I don't know exactly what that is, but maybe we can have an extensive repainting program from everything from street markings to the pools, as Mayor Heinrich recommended, to the light poles, to the trash cans. We could repaint the wall, and we'd have almost a brand-new, you know, a brand-new aesthetics to our downtown. I'd also like to create an adopt the block litter program, which wouldn't be a capital expense, but it would help us keep the litter off the streets for each block. And then if we create, if we create a vacant abandoned light property task force to address problems in the business district, I think that would be the first place to concentrate right now. And there's a number of properties that are unkept, and then I think this needs to be coordinated, a coordinated plan with Allegheny Technol, with the Allegheny Together program, so that we can update our ordinances and use the current ordinances as our own. Now, of course, we talked about we need the money for the sulfuring, the breach, and the demolition of houses. I figure a quarter million dollars would pay for all that. I mean, this is just a starting point. I would love to invite some of the people that were here in the audience, or some of the others who have emailed me to come and talk about this at either a public meeting or workshop meeting. I would love council's input, and I think working together, we can create something that would satisfy most of the concerns that were in this room that day. So, Mr. President, I present that to you, and I hope you take it in what it is meant to be, not in anything negative. So, thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. But just to clarify, you were against the million dollars, correct? Or more than?
Just to clarify, I lost that battle, correct?
I just wanted to make sure, I mean, you do have a lot of plans for the million dollars. I just, that's why I just.
Mr. President, I know, and I thank you for bringing that up because I don't want to be a mayor that says, "I told you not to do this, and I told you so." What I'm trying to do here is move on and work together.
Well, I am appreciative of that, but I thought you were sport that night when you brought up the skateboard park and the skateboard park, and then didn't want to sign the ordinance.
I never said I was sport. In fact, I, if you.
I thought you made arguments for the skateboard park and for the skateboard park.
I mean, I said that if we did borrow the million dollars, and I remember correctly because I said, "If you do borrow the million dollars," I thought some amenities would be.
But at the meeting, you said, then you refused to sign, correct?
Mr. President, you're skewing that whole evening, and in fact, you're taking one little point that evening. Here's exactly what happened that evening, is that we had dialogue going back and forth. I said from the beginning that I thought a million dollars was too much. But I was trying to dialogue with everyone, saying, "If we do have a million dollars, I think that it shouldn't just go for roads, that it should go for some amenities." Because, once again, and I will say this, Mr. President. I don't know why you're being so adversarial here, but...
Because I want to clarify this, Mr. Mayor. Because you do have a lot of plans for the million dollars, but yet you were against it.
Okay. This wasn't meant to create an argument, Mr. President?
It's not an argument, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify.
Mm-hmm. But, Mr. Mayor, excuse me, business officer.
I can ask you a question?
No, you can't. Anyway, Mr. President, what I will say is that... I am just moving forward here with some issues about the million dollars. I'm trying to take what the suggestions were from the public. And as far as whether I was for it or not, I never said I was for it, ever. I was just dialoguing with everybody that night. And I think I made my point fairly clear that I did not want to borrow a million dollars.
But I believe your comment was that we need a plan, and we need to stick with it rather than spending money on other things.
Right. And did you have a plan? No, the plan that was provided to us was provided that night. We sat down at a meeting to borrow a million dollars. And then, you pass out a plan that nobody else saw at all. And in fact, two of our...
Was there anything on that plan that was different than we discussed?
Yeah, there are some things a little different. Because it was a... That plan was all over the place. And it changed a little bit from the last time. In fact, the last time we sat down here, when we were going to take the vote, you didn't even give me a copy of the plan before we voted. You... I mean, before... Not before we voted, but before I acknowledged my veto. You waited till I had a veto, read my statement, and you said, "Oh, by the way, Jack, we worked on this over the weekend. Here's a copy for you."
And the plan was no different than what we discussed back there?
It was a little different. It wasn't quite the same thing. And I... And once again, I don't agree with that plan. I think that plan does not have... I think that plan's a little too over the board. I think, like, $100,000 for rehabilitating homes is too vague.
But $200,000 for Sarsfield or... Mr. Sarsfield?
Once again, Mr. Sarsfield, you're going to...
Mr. Mayor?
But... So, what's your problem with this, Pat? Can I... You just want to come right out and say it? What is your problem?
I don't have a problem with it. I certainly will take it under advisement. But if we came together and have a plan, I don't want to deviate. I'd like to try not to deviate from the plan. If it's community infrastructure that we're trying to work on, I completely understand what you're saying here. But the problem is that I'm going to deviate from the plan, and then, I'm going to be accused of deviating from the plan. I tried to put a plan together with input from Public Works, with input from Gateway Engineers, with input from our Borough Manager that satisfied our critical infrastructure needs. And that was the plan that presented. It was presented to council. And now, I'm hearing that you were... Now, you're... Have this long list of... It's basically a wish list that you would like to see get accomplished that, well, that the law of the land is, you were against the million to begin with.
I was against the million. I'm still against the million. So, you want me just to fight you on it a couple of times? Is that what you want?
No.
Because what I'm trying to say is that we had a crowd here. And I have emails galore that have concerns about what we're doing with this money. And I really believe the plan that you have is a wish list. I don't believe that it was... That we have enough information on that plan to make a decision. When you give somebody a plan 10 minutes before they vote, I don't think that's a very good idea.
But again, is the wish... Is the so-called wish list that I had any differ from what we discussed that evening?
It is slightly different.
You say slightly different. Please point out how it was slightly different.
Well, just the number... Just the amount of money going towards the... The $100,000 going towards the rehabilitation progress. That's number one. The roads, we had... You had a tremendous list that night of roads.
We have 1.7 on the list that I recall, that everyone agreed to, that we weren't going to be able to get that accomplished. So, we had to narrow down the list. And we had to come up with our critical infrastructure needs, which was the central business district.
And that was a suggestion I made to the chief early on. I'm trying to work with you, Mr. President. But you obviously want this to be... You want for the million dollars. And I don't want your ideas. And that is fine. You don't have to have any ideas. You can have your ideas and throw them away.
I just clearly want to understand where you're coming from.
Where I'm coming from is we are borrowing a million dollars, are we not? Well... Refinancing and savings. Two, was that not approved?
Yes, that was approved. Actually, it was an override of your veto if you want to get technical.
I know that. I know I vetoed it. I think everybody in this room knows I vetoed it. The question is, so you're telling me because I vetoed it, I should have no say-so? So, if I don't want a tax increase, if we have a tax... Wait a second. I'm speaking. If I don't want a tax increase, and we have a tax increase, then as a resident, I should have no say-so in spending that money because I didn't want it to begin with?
You told me... Quote me if I'm... Correct me if I'm wrong, but you told me that we needed a plan. We didn't have a plan. So, I went back to the table and then came up with the plan. And then, you told me that if we had a plan, we shouldn't deviate from it. So, I gave everyone the plan. And now, you're wanting to deviate from the plan that I presented by basically the critical infrastructure needs.
I never said if we have a plan to devi... First of all, I don't feel like that is a solid plan. That's my own personal opinion. Maybe other people do, but I didn't feel that was a solid plan. I think we could do much better with the million dollars and leverage outside money. And you heard the residents here. We have... And wouldn't you think if we're going to spend a million dollars taking some public input is a good idea? I mean, even the people you brought to the meeting had ideas. And I included them in this. That included Mayor Heinrich's idea of painting the pools.
Mr. Mayor, I forget what the debate is. So...
All right.
Thank you. These council members have a chance to comment on this?
Yes.
Under general public comment? Yes, thank you. Is there any general public comment from the audience?
I just wanted to say that I like the plan that you laid out.
It was only meant as a starting point. That's all it was.
Mr. Mayor, this is general public comment. This is their chance to speak, please.
Can I just address... Do you address me personally, Diana?
When I spoke the other evening, I went home and I sort of rethought some of the comments that were made from council and some of the points that I tried to make. And I came back this evening for one very specific reason. And that was to sort of clarify. I think I needed to clarify what I was trying to say. Because there was a lot of argumentative, I think, attitude from everybody.
Not from everybody?
Well, everybody... I was actually surprised at how many intelligent people could actually miss the point. Because I consider you all intelligent people. And you totally missed the point of my comment. And I'm that kind of upset, only from the standpoint that I thought, geez, maybe it's me and my communication skills, or maybe they just aren't listening. And I came here again tonight because I just want to reiterate something as it sort of applies to Mayor Kavistic's comments. Personally, I think keeping the million dollars in a separate account is a fabulous idea. And I'm surprised it wasn't part of your plan. Because I think when you're borrowing a million dollars for any kind of plan in a town, if you have a plan, that one of the most key things is keeping track of that money in case you have to differentiate from the plan. So, I think that's a great idea. I didn't even think of that. I really like that. And I really, really like that. Because I think there's always been... How many years, Mike, did you say we have to use this money?
Three years.
Three years. So, over a three-year period, things can change. And plans can change. And you may not be going in a different direction.
Just to clarify, as a general accounting practice, this money would have its own line item in the budget.
And just to clarify, it's part of the law issue.
Okay. Well, then, we're good. Because I think it's important that everybody keeps track of the money. The other thing is, there were comments made by... That I think you thought the residents were being argumentative in terms of, we kept saying, "There's not a plan. There's not a plan." And council kept saying, "There is a plan." There was contradictions in the comments. There was a comprehensive plan that is approved and almost approved. And this is part of the comprehensive plan. But then, it wasn't a part of the comprehensive plan. So, I went home, and I was like, okay. Now, I'm really confused. Because the whole point that I was trying to make is... The reason why I didn't think this was a plan is because if you said to me, "We have a plan, and we're going to pave these roads," then I would say, "What's the start date of the Parkway Belt Avenue ramp paving? When could I expect that to begin?"
That would have to... As we do every year when we're going to pave roads, it first has to go out the bid. We try to bid the roads as early as possible to get the best price. And I believe that that list shows a more premium cost. So, our cost may be a little less. But there's a progression how it happened. To give a specific date and time when it's going to happen, you know...
So, you don't know? In the next three years, we're going to spend $100,000 on paving that road?
No, February is one of the... It wasn't one of the good last year.
Okay. But there's numbers here on this.
Just to clarify, the bond issue had to... The bond issue became... It would be done starting in August. But the previous bond issue was in 2006. So, you have five years... Five years to go. The very first day that we were able to do it because of the interest rates and the fact that it was going to save money for the borough, council had such a plan that that was the meeting that was the orders that passed the way inside. Because of that, this couldn't be have been done until September 6th or July 5th. So, that order's... But that controls when the money can be borrowed. Now, there's other factors that are there to control when the streets can be paved, once we do the weather. Now, because of September 1st and October, it might not be the premium time to do it. But that money will be reserved to do that. You know, you're going to do it when you're going to get the best chance of holding...
Okay, let me rephrase the question then. You said we norm... I think I heard council say that we normally pave two roads a year, right?
Correct.
With this extra money, how many roads are we going to be able to pave now?
By looks of things, was it 11, Pat? No, it would be... Depending upon the price of asphalt. I mean, those prices are based upon the current year. So, those prices obviously could go up next year because asphalt is obviously tied to a total in base product. And obviously, prices increase. I can't answer with... I can't answer your question.
I wouldn't expect you to be able to.
I mean, I'm estimating that eight to 10 roads possibly. Depending upon their price.
Is that... But over a three-year period, I would expect six roads to be paved?
Well, that's assuming liquid fuels money stays at its current level as well. Because we also get money from the government, from the state government for liquid fuels funds. We got about $120,000, $130,000 for that. And actually, this year, we managed to pay a few more roads because we borrowed money from the general fund to do those roads.
Okay. So, we really don't know what we're doing with the money yet, except for paving roads?
No, we know we're building a salt bin. We know we're fixing the moral avenue bridge.
Right.
I think that's pretty definitive.
Right. Two, that's not a million dollars worth of money.
No, and we have 10 houses on the demo list.
Okay, so here was... And when's the first demolition going to happen?
Again, that has to go out. All of these things that you're talking about have to go out then.
Okay, but when does the bid go out?
Well, obviously, yeah, you can't bid things in the... I mean, starting in November, December, what have you. I mean, demolition is not typically happening.
I'm just trying to understand how the money's going to...
January 1st is when all of these things will start to kick in.
Okay, so I guess there's the point. The point I was trying to make is, you can't cause this, call this a definite plan. And the point that was trying... I wasn't up here saying, "Don't spend money. Don't improve the town." I was accused of not appreciating the chief. I was accused of wanting little kids to get hurt in the salt bin. And the only point I was trying to make is when a municipality gets a million dollars, the residents have the right that that money is talked about in terms of the best way to spend it. Everybody knows that there's roads that need to be paved. Everybody knows that the safety of this town has to be taken care of. No one's saying, "We don't want you to do it." The only point we were trying to make is that, as intelligent people in charge of this town, that we could feel good that there was a cooperative conversation based on what are the alternatives to do with this million dollars so that we're accomplishing as much as we possibly can. Much to the mayor's point this evening, which the rest of council, I think you guys got entered because he was bringing up some new ideas. But in my opinion, he was addressing what he heard me say. He listened to me because I was saying, "Are you sure this is the way we want to go?" I understand that there's things we have to have to do. The bridge, the salt bin. Everybody's good with that. But a million dollars is a lot of money. And there might be a way to think out of the box, to work a little bit better together, just to put some alternatives. Yes, you know, the structure, the infrastructure of the town, the capital improvements. But are we sure that there's been enough discussion? Enough of the, "Well, what if we did this? Well, what if we could do this? What if we could do that?" You might be able to actually get more bent for your buck with a little more conversation. And the point I was trying to make is I was not trying to insult anyone. I was not trying to play politics. I was simply saying a million dollars is a lot of money. And yes, roads need to be paved. But I was not feeling comfortable that enough thought process, that enough options had been addressed, that enough conversation had taken place with the residents, that it would... I mean, this should be something that you voted for the million dollars. That's a fabulous thing. Now, what's going... Like, let's make sure everybody's happy with how it's spent.
Again, Cheryl, don't you think that that's what we're going to do? Don't you think that we are going to go over this list again and do...
Based on this, I really didn't.
Do the best things that we need to do for the town. Like, the mayor brought up the LED lighting. Few of us have discussed that, you know? And it's not that expensive, and that's a great idea.
She wants you to steer 10 minutes ago when it was like, "What are you bringing up all these new ideas for? And you really think I think that's what's going to happen?"
Wait a second. Wait a second. He was just questioning him, and he was questioning him, okay? My point is this, is that, you know, instead of question... Keep, you know, repeatedly questioning our intelligence up here, try to understand that we are going to do that. We're going to do what's best. We're going to spend this money the best way that it should be spent.
When you presented a plan that was already approved...
We presented a plan. That's right. And that's what we plan on doing.
And the other night, I said, "Really? This is a plan?" It didn't seem like a plan to me, as I know plans, because the plans have start dates, contingencies, bid dates, when the bid goes out.
But like I said, we can't do that, the bids go out of danger, we can't.
Right, then don't tell me you have a plan!
I made sure he's going to be.
You got a plan!
That is a plan, we've been going over those plans for over a year.
It is an outline.
It's a, it's a plan, and we should stick to that plan.
It is not a plan.
Yes, it is.
And that was the point that the residents were trying to make.
Rather than get into back and forth, you have, we'll take, I mean, obviously, we're listening to what you're saying, and with all due respect, I, I, I understand you're saying that's not a plan, but if, if, what exactly did you expect? I mean, we have a million dollars, we're telling you exactly what we plan to spend it on, we can't tell you start dates, we have the list of the demos, we have approximately 34 houses that probably could be demoed at this point in time.
Right, so you obviously can't do all of them.
Uh, but the, we have a list of the top 10 public safety risks, it's seventy-five thousand, or seventy-five hundred dollars a pop, that's seventy-five hundred dollars, right, forty-five thousand dollars right there for the public safety risks. I, I, I understand what you're saying, but.
Is there any other option other than the demolition of some of these properties?
No.
And what is the timeframe revolving these?
Again, the demos have to go out the bid, you get a better price putting 10 properties out the bid, rather than nick one down and sending one or two properties out at one time.
Right.
You get a bear, a better price obviously involved.
Well, all due respect to council, and I get it, you think this is your plan, as a resident, I'm telling you, I don't think it's a plan. So, I guess we'll just agree to disagree.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other cup of comment?
I'm scared of him up now.
Oh, never be afraid.
Come on. Be afraid, be mayor afraid.
I, I just have a few issues. I know council has an ordinance on skateboarding in town, I got two kids, everybody else got kids. I think downtown skateboarding should be legal, should be stopped, should be, you know, posted, but in your residential neighborhood, when I was a kid, I rode bicycles, I rode skateboards, I rode bicycles, my seven-year-old daughter is scared of the police because a neighbor called the police department regarding kids riding skateboarding in the neighborhood because God went to sleep at 7:00 PM. My daughter was scared of the police department because he was threatening to write her a ticket, which he didn't do nothing wrong, he was in his rights, he was a man, you know, on the wall. I would like to see either one of two things now, like he talked about skateboarding, he talked about skateboarding, the mayor, that's the thing. What is wrong with that? What is wrong with doing something for these kids? You want to borrow a million bucks? Do something for these kids! Everybody's talking about making the town beautiful, making signs, doing lights, there's nothing wrong with that, what about these kids? This is your future, these kids are what are growing up, and they're, they're, they're still on the street corners smoking cigarettes, they're sitting in a house playing video games getting fat. The president, the people are talking about these kids coming outside and doing things they can't do nothing, they care about a scooter, they care about a skateboard, come on, that's kind of almost a little bit.
I agree with you more.
I mean, I rode bicycles my whole life, down frigging these streets, I'm all alone. I mean, you're, you're, you're not doing for these kids, I mean, I'm, I'm a parent, I've never been in this building before. I mean, can't we change that ordinance to where they could ride them in their vehicles or put something in the park? You got a hundred eighty-three thousand dollars to fix that park up, I ain't seen crap in that park in 13 years, all I see is these people cutting grass, 13 years, they're starting the park, wait! I mean, come on, I mean, they want to put a doggy park in, they want to put a doggy park in.
Their mind's supposed to be improved.
Why do we need a doggy park? I, I live.
As part of the community, a lot of people want dogs.
Wait, hold on, man, hold on, I've lived there, I've lived there for 13 years, I see the same people, maybe 10 people a week, walk their dog in that park, and then you're going to tell me you're going to put a doggy park in, and I'm going to smell shit in my backyard, I'm sitting outside having a barbecue from a doggy park. Now, is that right? I don't have a dog, I don't have a dog because I don't want to smell dog crap. Take that money and do something for the kids! You want to walk the dog, walk it in your own backyard, put a fence up, let the dog run around your yard, come on! I mean, don't you agree with me, Pat? Chief, don't you guys agree with this?
I, the problem is that, as far as the doggy park, that was already submitted for and paid for by grant money, so we've got grant money for that.
Okay.
So we can't hold you with a plan for that, or else we're going to be in trouble with the state, with the state, obviously.
I mean.
I mean, as far as the skateboard park, I, I told you, we can, we can definitely look at that, the problem is the liability.
Okay, here, now, you know I had a suggestion on that, I said take that parking lot where the hockey deck is, and asphalt.
But we.
There's, there's no different liability than them kids taking that skate or riding inside that hockey deck, or riding up in that tennis court, there's no difference in liability in that. You have to agree with me on that, whether that parking lot's paid, or that tennis court's paid, it's no difference in liability insurance.
Well, I think it is, if we, if we deem a certain area as a skate, skate.
But you're not, you're just paying it, and then now the kids are going to talk, have a better place to do it.
But it tweaks, what I'm saying is, if we do it and we allow them, then we are saying that, and then it is a liability.
But Mike, we want them to go to the tennis courts, several officers said, tell them to go to the tennis courts, tell them to go in the hockey deck. Well, when the kids are playing hockey, you can't do that, because that's disrespectful for those kids, because that's what that's there for, people are playing tennis, you can't do that, because that's disrespecting them. So now, where does it leave these little kids?
Well, I express my opinion to President Katina, that, you know, I agree that if we, if we can do it, I, I think we, we need to know what the cost of that liability is to take that on, and I, I think we can talk to Allegheny County, you know, they have a skateboard, skateboard park outside, or.
They all have it.
We, we can look at the numbers, see what we can do, plan going forward, so it, it is being looked at, and your issue is being addressed.
These kids need to ask for much, there's just asking for a place to go, I mean, you're down on those street corners, you know, sixteen years old selling drugs, is that the right way to go?
Excuse me, can I ask a question? Because I was waiting for someone to interject with, but we are, I thought the original plans called for a doggy park and a skateboard park.
But everybody's pushing aside.
Phase two.
That's not fair.
Are we going to get it, anything? You have to wait till they, till they started.
That's phase two.
Phase one and phase two.
I mean, I've been offered, I've been offered to help, now all the kids offered help, they just want somewhere to go, no, I'm, I'm, I'm talking for all the kids, because these kids, they all want to come here, there was 260 kids that wanted to come here.
No, brother.
I said, no.
The thing is, that's the patient, there's looking at one, phase two for any park, there is a skateboard park.
But, but can we at least change the ordinance that they can ride in their neighborhood? In their street? I mean, come on, I live in a precinct, I live, I mean, it's like Corin, you all know me, you know where I live, I mean, isn't it a bad thing if my kids are going to ride up the end of the street and come back down on a skateboard? What's wrong with that?
I think so.
So why can't we change that ordinance? I mean, this man right here, his officers are doing, they're doing what their job's supposed to be, they're coming in the neighborhood, they're telling the kids to get, ride.
I would rather see them on your street, they skateboard over at the high school, and the only, or, used to be the high school, I'm shunning my age, the middle, the elementary school.
You changed your hope.
The elementary school, and the only reason I don't like that is there's that ramp, and I'm terrified when I'm going to go through those platelet doors or skateboard out into the street.
They all were, yeah.
Yeah, I'd rather see them on a street that they live on than at that, at school.
Than being told they can't do it. So, I mean, can you, does council change that ordinance?
Well, I, I think, in, in, you know, you can correct me, I think one, one of the concerns was, if I remember reading the, the card correctly, was that, I guess, whenever you, I don't know if it was your daughter or something, drifted through the stop sign, and I guess a car was coming.
No, no, my kids.
Okay, well, one of the kids from, from that street, so I think that, you know, even with us saying, yeah, it's okay to do it on your street, there has to be some privacy provision, there has to be, because if one of our kids gets hurt.
Right.
I'm going to be more devastated than them not being able to skateboard.
See, I, I live right there on the end, and I tell my kids, the stop sign right there, you don't go past it, you know, if you guys want to ride your skateboards up and down the street, you know, they do, and stop signs are living, you know, you don't go past there because of that intersection, because people don't stop at that stop sign, that stop sign's a three-way, I mean, we've got 32 cars in one day, you know, go through that stop sign, and you guys can retire off, and you just watch it all day. But, I'm saying this, you know, if we can just get something for these kids.
We will take it under advisement, and we'll try to work on a temporary solution until phase two for any park.
Can we at least get, I mean, I agree right there, that's cool, I appreciate that, the kids will appreciate that too, but can we at least change the ordinance that they can ride in their neighborhood without?
Will, will we review the ordinance?
Same something.
Will we review the ordinance?
That's all I'm asking. Mike, another question for you, buddy. When you talk about commercial vehicles, you're, you're referring to what, box trucks, red trucks, stuff like that? I run a business, I run a residential business.
But, um, part of this ordinance was proposed by the mayor, so he, he may want to respond to this question.
So, so what are you referring to as an ordinance? Now, I park my trailers, and I did this because the borough asked me to do this, I, me and labor field in that spot where we park our trailers.
We're talking on-street.
I, I understand it, but now, I'm working all day, I come home at 7:00, you guys know I work a lot of hours, I come home, I don't want to back that trailer in the dark and then walk it back up at 6:00 tomorrow morning. I think what is the problem with me parking in front of my house off the street, it's no lighter than my truck, if it was sitting there too, it's why I couldn't work.
The issue is, is that we don't have a good on-street parking, and what we're trying to do is keep the neighborhoods, I guess, looking better, we have a number of box trucks, and we have another big trucks, we have a number of individuals and fleets, and not every street is the same, but some streets, the parking is extremely tight, and I think your street, the parking is somewhat tight there too.
No, we, we, because your neighbors. A garbage truck being, she got the other street, and, you know, it's pretty, we, we moved, I moved mine about two feet into my yard when I parked the trailer out in front of the street.
But we are talking about creating an off-street parking ordinance.
For commercial, for commercial vehicles. For commercial, I'm not commercial.
Yeah.
I'm residential.
But you, no, you run a business though, that would make.
I run a residential business, I don't do commercial business.
Well, commercial vehicles, there's actually a set code for a commercial, I mean, it doesn't matter what you, a commercial vehicle, there's a, you, the definition, what you're looking at is different than what you're.
Okay, commercial, when you usually, but you're saying commercial vehicle, explain to me the difference between a commercial vehicle and my vehicle.
Well, I don't think there is much of a difference.
There is no difference.
The trailer, what the trailer, now, your truck.
My trailer is not considered a commercial vehicle, my trailer is considered a trailer.
That is right, you, it is considered a trailer.
I store, I store my equipment in that trailer.
You're right, you're considering a trailer.
That is not a commercial box truck, that is not a semi, that is not.
Yeah, just for clarification, I don't think we were discussing trailers, I believe it was commercial vehicles.
We were definitely talking about, talking trailer.
We did talk trailers, Mr. President.
But the ordinance that we looked at, didn't have, the ordinance that I saw didn't have any mention of trailers, I don't think, or getting.
No, it's, it's what we.
I think it does pretty much.
I mean, I, I mean, I'm just saying.
It's obvious, and.
Because there's, we're still researching it at this point, that's why we tagged it tonight, because we don't have all the facts.
I mean, I just, I just want to know what it considers commercial, that's what, I'm not commercial.
That's the, that's what we have to do, is identify what's considered commercial, now.
I mean, that's no different than we parked my pickup truck that's, you know, 20-foot long, in front of my house.
Well, it is different in a neighborhood, though, I mean, it, it.
How's it different?
It is different because of the fact that, you know, you park a truck in your neighborhood, that's one thing, when you park a trailer.
Okay.
That, that changes the whole complexion of the neighborhood.
What's the difference?
It's.
Well, let's.
It's insured, it's licensed, and it's the same width and same length as my pickup, so where is it different? Explain that to me.
Let's not get into back and forth, that'll.